The county commission session for September two thousand, September eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Petey, would you leave us some prayer?
Thank you for bringing us all tonight and safely to this meeting. Be with us is give us the insight and wisdom to handle the affairs of the county and the country and our community. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Everyone say.
Mr. Simkins, Mr. Ledger, Mr. McElwain, Mr. Beatty, Mr. Dawson, Ms. Spicer, Mr. Buckner, Mr. Britt, Mr. Petty, Mr. Williams, Mr. Grove, Ms. Gray.
Do you have a quorum? Thank you. First order business is approval of minutes of August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three meeting. But before her motion, motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Out of the truth is public comments. No one has signed up for public comments tonight. Out of number three is committee reports. Are any committees to report? Hearing none on that resolutions, financial reports, all school funds. Dr. Weeks is here with us tonight. He presented those you two weeks ago. Are there any questions for Dr. Weeks? Open floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Gray. Any questions for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Out of number two is resolution to accept an approved county trustees report of errors and double assessments. This is what Ms. Pendergrass explained to you in detail two weeks ago. Any questions or discussions? Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Petey, second by Commissioner Britt. Hearing no questions. All in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Out of number three is resolution to establish a program to supplement the property tax relief program of the state of Tennessee provided for in title sixty-seven. Chapter five, part seven of the Tennessee code annotated. This is also what Ms. Pendergrass went over two weeks ago. Any questions or discussion? Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner Buckner. There's no question discussion. All in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. To just to show that we have no particular allegiance to numbers, we skip number four. So. Remember, it's not a measure of quanti- quantity. It's just a number that sets it apart from the others. Plus, Ms. Moore became a grandmother today, so we didn't have an opportunity to review that. So. Came a little bit early, but keep that, keep the more family in your prayers. Out of number five is resolution authorized county to enter into a lease contract with Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC for phone system. Equated equipment and related services. This is what Mr. Bear explained last week, and he is in the back if you have any questions. There are none. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by, thank you, Commissioner McElwain.
Regular Comcast.
It's a regular, it's a Comcast telephone system as well as providing high-speed internet. They also do telephones. And it's the cheapest one that we found out there. That's what this building uses in the justice center. Their phone, uh, program contract expired at AT&T and it made the price skyrocket. So this is keep it economical.
Well, in that new deal in Charlotte now.
Yes, I see that Comcast, they did some work in the Vandler area in particular. I think it's changed Mr. McElwain's life. He's got all the movie channels now. He could potentially have all the movie channels available.
Well, is it going to run down to fifty?
On that, I'm not aware of. The Dixon Electric and the Ignite Service will run down to fifty. They'll cover their entire county.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
They're pretty active working on Highway forty-eight and calling for a state road. Oh, Highway forty-eight and a lot of areas in Charlotte coming out of the substation there. So they're, they're, they're out here.
Thank you. On the phone system, any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Out of number six is a resolution authorized budget amendment to appropriate, to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars from the county's general fund, fund one oh one. As to be used matching fund for endowment to be established by the Dixon County Help Center. This is what we discussed in detail last week. Any questions for my, for me? Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Grove. He may have hurt himself. He was your second. I'm so addled now. I didn't know who put their hand up second. Anybody just jump in. Thank you, Commissioner McElwain. We do have appropriate motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Out of number seven is part-time employee supplement. This is what we discussed in detail. I've talked with several of y'all on this since then. Uh, I appreciate your generosity, these employees. Uh, the convenience center workers seem to be the biggest issue. Uh, on what they were making. We went back and met with Mr. Lunn. There were four employees that were still making ten dollars an hour, but after him doing some research, there was no need to hold them back there. So. What we're proposing inside this, even though we're asking it's a hundred thousand total, but inside that. It raises the basic beginning convenience center worker from ten dollars an hour to twelve dollars an hour. Uh, on that, we had several others in our maintenance area on cleaning that was taken care of. Our veteran service officers to keep them competitive and, uh, but most everyone is seeing a significant raise. And it will fill in management. We've worked with them. It's everyone that's involved in the compensation plan. Any questions or discussion on that? Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Ledger, second by Commissioner Simkins. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye, opposed, thank you. Under other business night, I have some informal conversations individual with several county commissioners. Uh, over the last two weeks and, uh, again, it will be the will of this commission, but as you recall, we tend to be scheduled a meeting at six o'clock on Monday, October. Sixteenth to review a school building program. Uh, after talking to several of you, uh, and again, that no action has to be taken tonight. Uh, we can make that decision from the chair, but we certainly want your input, uh, that, uh, we will meet again on October second before that meeting. But there has been concern from several of y'all about going forth with the school building program. Uh, without a full-time director in place. Uh, so as we are always here at Dixon County Commission, county mayor's office, we're open for communication and discussion on that. Uh, but, uh, if you'd like to take any official stance tonight about an October sixteenth meeting, uh, to meet the school board. If you want to delay that till Monday, October the second, make that decision. Uh, it is the will of the commission on that. Uh, we're not in a situation where that hat decision has to be made right now. Proper notification can be given in two weeks from now, but. If you would like to discuss any of that at this point, uh, we are other, uh, we are under, under other business. It's hard to say. Um, I'd be glad to discuss and hear your thoughts on that and share them with the public and with Dr. Weeks, who is in the room. So you can carry any message you may have back to the school board.
Mayor, I, I said last, last meeting with Dr. Weeks and he kind of answered it. I believe the two directors of schools will have any input on any major building projects that's going forward with. And I know they've got some things on board that, that they can pull out their own fund and their own surplus that, that I'd be happy to consider to vote on. But anything that we're going to borrow money on and going forward with that, I think we'll have a director of schools in place. And see their vision, their plan, and make sure that they're on board with this. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Grove. Any other comments?
I'll, I'll agree with that. I'm, I'm kind of under the same assumption that, um, that we need a director, a leader. And also just, this is just an opinion and I'll be glad to give it to some of the school board members, but. Also, you know, Dixon County School Systems is the largest employer of the county. And I'm kind of shocked that we don't have an assistant, a director, and it's going to leave this if something, if they can't get someone in place. So. I guess my advice would be to the school board. As they look for a new director, I wish they would look for an assistant. That is to be the largest employer of the county and not have someone assistant is. That's not the way most people run businesses in, in the private sector. So just my opinion on that as well.
Thank Commissioner Williams. Any other quite just comments, sorry. I appreciate your comments. If it's, uh, unless the commission says otherwise, I'm going to leave that date for the October sixteenth meeting in place at this time. Then we will, if there's anything that, that comes up, uh, that we need to go forward with, we have that time and date established that that's okay with Dr. Weeks. Uh, and then, uh, then if we need to cancel, we can cancel that on that two weeks ahead of time on October second to give sufficient notice. Is that okay with you, Dr. Weeks? And again, I know you're speaking for the board, but, uh.
Yes, sir. And Commissioner, I'd just like to share with you where, where the board is in their building plan. Uh, there is a special session this coming Thursday night and this Thursday night. The, on the agenda is, is a desire to, first of all, I think prioritize and finalize a building plan, which, uh. Which you know, has the Charlotte Middle Project on there. Uh, it has central office space on there. There's discussion about the CTE building. And there's also discussion about, um, the Dixon Elementary Project. So that's, that's one piece. The second piece of that is, I think what you're referring to, Commissioner Grove, the, the, uh, short-term, uh, major repair list, short, short-term. List of items that again, that I think the board can take care of out of the current fund balance. Uh, so those are some things like some air conditioning needs, some painting needs, some, um, parking lot striping and resealing and needs like that. Uh, there are also some, uh, some other smaller projects that we talked about and, um. We'll have a discussion at this coming Thursday nights, planning, excuse me, special session to talk about those and prioritize those. And, uh, potentially, uh, I would see coming back and whether it's at sixteenth or where, whether it's a planning session before that, maybe coming back and asking for some funding from our fund balance. Uh, to do those projects as well. So that'll be that, those are the items that are coming up this Thursday night. Uh, at the special session, board also has a regular session on the twenty-eighth and so I will, um. There, there's another opportunity to take any action that the board needs to in terms of building plans, but that answered that question, but, uh, we will still keep that. Um, date on, if the commission wants to meet or if they want to discuss any either long-term or short-term plans, be glad to do that.
Thank you. What, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, both those meetings are at our office, central office. Yes, sir.
Again, I have talked with several commissioners individually, uh. One of the things with the building program, I'm in complete agreement with the comments that have been made. Tonight and others have been made to me privately. The one, and when I attended your meeting at Dixon Middle School in late August, it seemed like, or maybe that was late July. It was right before school started. It was hot outside. Uh, but whenever we met and you had the proposal. Uh, with the group that makes the proposal and then the other, the other issues that you're going to pay out of your fund balance. Uh, the repairs, air conditioning. We talked a lot about athletic facilities on that. Uh, from a personal standpoint, again, I know it's the will of the board, but I would encourage the, the board to go forward with that discussion because regardless. If a building program continues, slows down or changed altogether, those are items that need to be done in my opinion. Regardless, and because of the, again, a lot of the issues with Dixon County High School being over fifty years old now. The athletic facility is antiquated and I know there's a lot of good projects out there. That we, that we can look at spending money and I would personally, I'm, I think talking a lot of commissioners would be very supportive of that. About turfing fields, uh, improving the track and bring it back to Dixon County Stadium. Uh, lighting, uh, I know there's a probably even a problem at, at Charlotte Middle School right now. They said it's awful dark at their game the other night. Uh, those are things for just fair play, safety that I think need to be done. And, uh, one, and it's again, my personal opinion, other, there may be others, uh, but we're taking care of a lot of issues that need to be done, but. Because of women's softball and frankly, some of the attacks on women's sports in general that are going around on right now. It's been a very successful sport and it being a sport that shares time with Dixon Middle School who has no field. I'd personally be in favor of if the school board would entertain looking at turfing the softball field, either the hold field or the infield. Where that could be more multi-use and bring other, as we know, those who had to manage grass fields over the time, they get torn up easy. And it's hard to bring another team on, but the, the beauty of turf, as you explain. The maintenance gets very low for a long time. And again, I'd like to see that. I, I'm hoping the school board entertained that and I'll be glad to share that with them individually, but I do want to go on record on that too.
Thank you. And if you don't mind me addressing, no please, commissioners, thank you for, for entertaining that conversation. Um. One of our, one of our projects that I have brought forward to them is, is the, the request to turf our athletic fields. And again, I'd. Uh, some people say it's just about football. It's not just about football because those fields will receive multiple use from, uh, both girls and, and boys' sports, uh, in terms of soccer. Uh, they would certainly get the football use, but, but you'd also get the use that are two high schools from, uh, the middle schools, the junior pro programs and everything that plays on there. Uh, Mayor, you mentioned that, um. I was told when I came to Dixon County that the, the track never was just quite right. That was placed at Dixon County High School. So that would allow us to bring the track back inside of the stadium and put that around the, the field, uh, in there. Uh, so those would be our two first priorities that would, we, we're trying to take care of there. Um. We have selected some dates that we'd like to go potentially view some, some of the fields. I know Henry County just put in a field. Uh, Crockett County just put in a field, uh, Camden and Benton County just put in a field. So, you know, we're, we're behind. People that have much smaller districts than we do and are, um. You know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a sense of pride for our community. It's also a sense of equality and equity and, and sports and competitiveness and, you know, just, you know, our students deserve so much better than what we have. So this is a good opportunity to improve those. Um, we're looking at doing the same thing at Creekwood High School. And we had originally talked about going ahead and turfing that field as well. And we'd had a conversation about the CTE building that would provide the welding opportunities there at Creekwood. And if, uh, if we were to move the field, uh, and, and to have a turf field there, then the soccer team, which practices on the field, those who are familiar with the, the behind side of, uh, Creekwood. Uh, the soccer practices back there behind the ag building between the bag building and the, uh, softball field. So. That space would be an ideal space, we believe, for, for the CTE building that we've talked about in terms of welding. So those are our two, um, major projects. Um. Again, I believe we have money in our fund balance to do those. Uh, I'd like to, again, I've discussed and they'll discuss this coming Thursday night about visiting some of the schools that have those in there. In their school systems and their new schools, uh, so giving them five or six dates that we could go as a group. Uh, to view those, ask athletic directors, football coaches, another coach and principal. Uh, from our two high schools to go with us and travel around to look at those facilities. So we do hope to do that. The other thing, and just like to add, Mayor, we, we do recognize there are several places that, that also need some other upgrades. We, we talked about lighting. We talked about bleachers. We talked about concession stands and all those type things that, that also need some work. Particularly at those two fields, Creekwood High School, Dixon County High School, uh, certainly we don't want to do anything now that has to be undone. And they're telling us the preliminary numbers and preliminary discussion, uh, I think they're talking that the field at Dixon County High School would probably need to be moved over. Ten or fifteen feet so that the, the track would fit around there correctly and all that. So, you know, the last thing we want to do is. Fix lighting at Dixon County High School where you have to turn around after you turf field and move the lighting or something like that. But at, at our middle schools, we have allocated money in our budgets to each of those schools for minor repairs to their facilities. Uh, lighting being one of those. So there is money in their budgets and I've had a couple of conversations tonight about that and we'll, we'll share that with those principals that. You know, that is certainly something that a principal has the money in their budget that we've designated to them to do at this point in time. So I'll make sure that word gets passed along. And, um. The other facilities, again, principals, principals at high and middle schools have some dollars allocated to them. Uh, so if turf, turfing other fields were a need or a desire of those communities, certainly those are things that they, they do have some budgeted dollars and we can obviously help and assist with those as well. So we, we'll be sharing that discussion Thursday night.
Well, I appreciate that. And, and again, we, over the years, when you start talking about those improvements, and I'll just specifically speak to athletics. Uh, that's kind of been the whipping boy because you'll have people, you ought to take care of teachers and children. You, the school board and the staff and the teachers have done that and we appreciate the work you've done to get to that point. Now we have some one-time money available, not recurring funds where we can make a giant leap in facilities. And again, I'm, you know, I appreciate what you're saying of Crockett County, Henry County, those that are much, have become even Henry County is much smaller than us now. Uh, they, they're putting that, we're not taking away from education and, and teachers and the thing, and the most important, the children, but it enhances it. And again. Uh, if they're, if not now, when? And, and I think I appreciate you bringing it forward. That is a point of discussion. And I think we really need to push forward on it. And again, that, that is my opinion. I don't have a vote in it, but I feel very strongly about it. What do you want to also like to ask you questions for Dr. Weeks? Yes, Commissioner Dawson.
Got started in whatever. And, and did I hear you right while like when you made a change now that the incoming superintendent might want to change then? I mean, when he comes, is that possible or is that just, and that don't ma- that don't make sense.
Commissioner, I, I suppose they could, uh, it, the board adopts the plan and brings to you. Uh, so, so I think in cooperation between a director of schools and their board of education, um. You know, there, there's flexibility there, I suppose. And so again, they, they, they have prioritized two or three items that they'd asked me to bring to you. And then, um, at our last planning session, I think there was some discussion and some maybe possible consideration to rearrange some of those. So, uh, that's part of the discussion for this coming Thursday night is, uh, I think to finalize that plan and what does that look like and put some. Uh, good solid budgetary numbers on there as of right now. So, um.
When, when is your last day?
Uh, I've, I've told the board I'd be, uh, very glad to stay in Dixon until the twenty-eighth of November. Probably that's the, I mean, stay right after Thanksgiving.
Well, how long do you think it's going to take to replace?
I, I, I think it probably depends upon what direction the board takes. Um, there, there are, there are two or three things I think that could happen. Um, first of all, the Tennessee School Board Association has a, a search process that they, they come in and they talk to the community. They talk to board members. They talk to staff. And kind of develop a profile of what they would like their next director to be. Then they post that job out there. They take applications and then they bring applicants before the board. The board usually spends a day interviewing each one of those applicants. Sometimes they'll narrow that down to two or three. Sometimes they'll narrow it down and hire them. Um.
Well, I know.
So that's one method. Another method is, um, you know, they could, um. I've heard of districts that have decided they wanted somebody and taken a vote. Very, very short notice. And then, um, you know, sometimes they might appoint an interim while, while all that process is taking off.
Well, twenty-eighth of November, we can get a lot done for you, Lee. I'm with the mayor. I think we ought to go.
Hey, Doc, what's the, what's the fund balance of the school?
Uh, the dollars that I brought to you last, uh, on the report that you approved, approved tonight, somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty, thirty-two million.
Thirty-two million. What, what's the law say y'all might require to keep in your fund balance?
Required to keep three percent of our expenditures, which is, uh. Two and a half, so.
Two and a half million?
I, I don't think anybody's going to sleep well if our fund balance.
What I'm, what I'm going at is.
I, I should feel comfortable, I would feel comfortable with a twelve, fifteen million dollar fund balance.
So let's say fifteen. So you've got sixteen million dollars. Why are we even entertaining? And, and I'm. So let's say 15. So you've got 16 million dollars. Why are we even entertaining? And, and I'm, you're educating me. Why are we entertaining borrowing money right now when y'all are sitting on 32? What are you saving it for? What, what's, what's the plan? Why don't we fix all this? Why are we doing it? Why are we going to borrow money while y'all sitting on 32 million dollars?
And I, I think that's a great question. I, I think part of that is part of that is because we, we, along with you, along with the mayor, we, we budget very conservatively. So I think, think on the report that we showed you, for instance, I think we received 116% of our budgeted revenues. So revenues are coming in very strong right now. The economy is very good. We're all benefiting from that. So that's one thing. So, you know, you, you budget to receive 18 million dollars and you receive 21, 22. So, so that's, that's a great benefit. I think our department heads and our finance office have also been very conservative and, and when we budget. You know, even though it's budgeted, sometimes we don't spend exactly what's budgeted. We try to be very careful with what's, what we spend and how we spend. And so I, I think because of that, our fund balance is also allowed to build. The third thing that's contributed to that is the, the federal S R dollars that we have received. And so there have been a lot of things that we'd normally pay for out of our budget. And the federal government has sent money to us to spend on those type things. Now I'll give you a couple of big examples would be all of our health services, our nursing services, probably five or six million dollars for the last couple of years. Federal government has sent us money for that. And so therefore we've not had to spend that out of county, county dollars.
I, I, I understand how we accumulate, accumulate money. And Mayor, correct me if I'm, if I'm getting out of line and don't, or getting off course and not making sense. But I understand how we occurred the money. But if you take the C T building and all the, the little projects you've got going on and the field turf and everything, what are we talking about? 10 million dollars?
Uh, no, sir. We, we've estimated the C T building, just the construction of the building right now is probably going to be about two and a half.
Okay.
The, the board has not decided exactly where they wanted to place that. So they're having discussions on, do we put it on the soccer field? Do we put it somewhere else around behind Creekwood High School or whatever? So it's going to take a lot of geotech work. It's going to take a lot of deciding.
I understand. Just around about number two and a half million?
So two and a half million just for construction. So probably another three, $400,000 for geotech work and engineering and stuff wherever that goes. So.
Three million?
Maybe three, you know.
What's the field turf and stuff?
Field turf. So I think we can do Creekwood probably 1.2, 1.3 Dixon County High. Cause you're going to put the track with that probably 2.5, 2.7.
So we're less than what we're eight million dollars maybe?
Still in the eight, yeah.
And you got 32 million dollars. And so you're down to 24 million.
Yes.
Right. And you're sitting there. Then why can't y'all take that other 12 and put it towards a building project at Charlotte Middle School than your building projects? So we're not borrowing everything that the county's, because I understand that 32 million is all we can borrow you on any project, correct? Is that just our, what we can borrow?
Yes, yes.
So, so it makes no sense to me why we're borrowing all this money. When the school board is not willing to help out and, and they can spend eight million dollars to fix everything they want. Plus put 12 million dollars for the Charlotte building project. We don't have to, we can do it and do it right. And y'all still have 10, 12 million dollars in reserves. Does that make sense, Mayor? Am I making sense or?
No, I don't understand what you're saying.
Why are they just sitting there on their money wanting us to borrow?
I think it's something needs to be reviewed. And again, that's something that, you know, we've talked about for some time over here. Again, the 32 and a half million dollars, and I know Dr. Weeks knows this, I'm not preaching to him by any means. That's a figure we could borrow up to. Again, that was, we're, that, that's nothing y'all voted on. Don Hall and I worked a projection to get us to that point to show where we are. Our borrowing and I'll, I can have a, do a presentation on this for you next time. We're in good shape on this, but with what rates are today. It's not like borrowing money that we borrowed to build the justice center. We're around 2% there. There's things in the five and six percents now. All of our projections and forecasting been done on the worst day being 5%. Well, more than likely we've blown through 5%. That gets in about us taking this debt to bond market, but in, in possibly getting lower, but get back to the point. No, it doesn't all have to be borrowed. We have the next relief on borrowing at roughly, and again, Don and I have to work the numbers again because we have the final numbers. The next relief, we see where we can borrow money without raising taxes about, probably in fiscal year 2032, which used to sound like a long time away, but that's only eight years away. So in the meantime, we can borrow 32 and a half and be prepared to borrow some then. The great unknown, what does keep me awake at night? We've been able to do so much of the improvements, so things, so many things with schools without the school population growing. And we know that's an anomaly that's probably going to end because it's happening in Rutherford, Williamson, Wilson, Sumner County. So when we discuss this project, and I guess it's some of the discussions I had, we had here. This is your time to fix things, get caught up. If you need to do something at Charlotte, that's fine, Dix elementary. Cause next time, whenever another county commission's here in about seven or eight years, there's going to be a decision made to borrow money to build a school, whatever the need is, elementary, middle, high, or any combination thereof. So this is kind of the last bar you can do to take care of the problem. If we don't take all that money and borrow all of it, that 2034, I mean, 2032 figure moves back toward us a little quicker, probably. And again, without a calculator or a spreadsheet, 2030, we could probably borrow money without a major tax increase. The whole time back to when we got in office here, we were saddled with things like the jail and other things that were built, but no debt was set aside, no payments set aside for debt. The promise, I think the commission made the time and certainly the promise I made the time that we're going to know before we borrow money exactly how we're going to pay for it. And if we borrow money, if it's going to require tax increase in a year or two, we need to tell the public that then where they understand it because on the jail, nothing was said. And then we got saddled with that. We've done a real good job of scheduling this debt and meeting it out. But you don't want to overplay your hand. The, in Dixon County, total taxable property is 1.6 billion dollars that we can tax. Property is worth way, way more than that. But we, and there's a percentage, we're in good shape on our debt versus taxable property. But it's been since I'm mayor, when I was mayor, that taxable property actually moved into the one billion dollar mark. That's been seven or eight years ago. Ms. Jenny Hees back here, but it was, I remember when it actually crossed over to think we're worth a billion dollars taxable property. So I'm telling a long story. We can borrow ourselves and borrow well, but I don't want to do anything that would hinder the next mayor, the next county commission, the one after this county commission, the one after the next county mayor. Because decisions we're going to make today or next week or next month, you're talking about 20 years of debt service. So think how old you'll be in 20 years and what else is going on. And I apologize for.
I kind of like to hear the other commissioners thought on it. Why, why are we not, only some of this extra money we got paying down our debt? And why is the school not using some of their money to pay off this instead of putting it all on us as taxpayers? Why are they setting? My point is why are we sitting on 32 million dollars and not spending it, I guess?
Well, I guess the other question, I don't mean to put Dr. Weeks on the spot. This question will. When you've closed your books this year, do you have any idea? I know you had the excess revenue, which you said you're up 17% above, 117% total. There's a figure there. Well, you probably have unspent expenses that will also bolster that number. Do you have any idea what that's going to add to your fund balance above the 32 million?
Not exactly, because I think when we brought our first budget, it was approved last year. I think we anticipated dipping into fund balance about $5 million. We did not do that at all. So again, I can see, you know, easily see that five million come into fund balance. So again, the reports that you, that you've approved or, you know, will be prepared and given to audit. I think audit starts in November this year. So, so it'll be November. We, we should have a, a good feel of what that's going to look like.
Well, the good news on that is the timing works out well, but if by delaying this building program, by the time they hire a new director, and by the time that plan's approved and we're ready to go to bar, that will probably be at this point in March. Well, the good news is in March, we'll have an accurate fund balance from the audit of what schools have, what we have, what every fund has. So again, it's, I hate the circumstances got this point, but in some ways it's a blessing that we can reanalyze that when we have true hard numbers from the controller's office. Another reason that waiting for a new director is not the worst thing that could happen with Dr. Weeks leaving. Otherwise we go forward.
It has been profit, right? And that, it doesn't sort of the way that it is profit?
I look at it as an unspent budget. So.
But any profits?
It's a savings.
But it, but you tax it and I'll get this back here in the rear and it comes to the, to the, to your, your budget or your, your balance.
Yes.
See, that's profit. Now, then going forth, you're going to have the same thing coming into your fund balance.
Right.
So you, you've got profit sitting there of how much? I mean, how much was it per year? You, you know?
Uh, the first couple of years I was here, it was very close. I, I'll be more than happy to, I've, I've got that on a spreadsheet that can show you every year. So it's, it's grown.
And, and, and like, Mr. Rose says, you know, you could put that on, on debt. It's like if we over get more than what our fund balance, we can put that on debt too, Mayor. Right?
Excuse me?
Like in general funds. I mean, if we, if we got more in, then instead of trying to spend it, we can put it on debt, right?
We don't spend it, but we keep a solid fund balance. Our fund balance is around over 50%. But there, the, the part of that is restricted because certain funds you have to hold money for if it's collected in certain ways. Our goal is to always keep 40% fund balance versus our expenses. And that's a number we hold pretty steady to. We don't, if we come into the next year and we're well over 40% on unrestricted funds, we spend that money without coming back to the taxpayer. So we, you may recall in our, my 13 years here, we've increased property taxes twice and we lowered them once. So in a 13-year window, that's pretty good. One of the, the, the deal on burning, building burn school from the day we started that program, when I visited y'all in March of 2014, not that I recall when, that we would knew at that point what window we could borrow 40 million dollars. But the discussion was, I know where you can get your money to borrow, but I don't have money to set aside to operate the school. Well, that's where we had the property tax increase. About two thirds of it went to operations of schools and the other third of it came back to county general. So that part was a double taxing, tax increase at that point. So we keep it pretty lean here. Could we drive our fund balance down? Yes, we could. But like the state of Tennessee does with their healthy fund balances, what they return to, refer to as a rainy day fund. We need that. One of the easiest answers is when you borrow money, it's the old saying those bankers used to have. If you, we don't lend you money if you need money. We lend you money if you have money. And so our rates and our debt is looked at and our bond rating is how much money we have in the savings account. 40% is a perfect number. When I got here, it was less than 10%. We were nearing or close to bankruptcy. So we built our way out of it. When we had a tragedy like COVID, what occurred during that, as bad as that was, we never touched our regular fund balance. We spent money out the hotel motel tax to help that. So again, I think I always say that term and I meant with love and endearment about my parents. They were children of depression. They were hand wringers. I grew up that way, especially with other people's money. I don't want to ever put this county into position where we have to go and beg and borrow and steal that we have money to pay our own way. If COVID turned into something of biblical portions with, just imagine, I will give you an example. I think you know how bad it could have gotten. But we could easily spend five or six million dollars and not hurt our fund balance. But we need to be prepared for that worst day because once you start spending it, it's more like a Dave Ramsey course. You get inside your fund balance and spend it. That's like spending money to make a car payment or spending money to go on vacation out of your savings account. And you can't do that every day because you go out to pay the piper one day. So we, fortunately, we've been very lucky to have a fund balance and I'm very proud of it.
And Mayor, if I could piggyback on that, I, I think when I came, our fund balance was about 5% of our expenditures. And so it, it was, we, we had a few very lean years. I, I, after again, the mayor and I work on budgets a whole lot together in March, April and May. But when, when he told me their goal was 40 or your goal was 40% to have that fund balance, we're, we're right into 36, 37%. So again, we're approaching the same standards that, that you set for yourself. So the board of education is approaching that as well.
We'll have a finance class in my office tomorrow. If anybody wants to drop by. I apologize for getting off in the weeds, but I think it's important y'all to ask them great questions because it's things that we bounce around every day that Mr. Hall and I talk about every day. Things I talk with my directors every other day, things I would talk to the elected officials periodically. But it's something that requires all of us, the management roles to do that and have your support as we always had with policies that have us in a strong financial condition. I've got some stuff down in the office. I'll share with y'all next time that the controller's office is done. And it shows the financial strength of Dixon County of what's been done. And it's been from the county commission over the last 13 years supporting the work we've done, understanding that we're not just playing the game for today. We're playing, playing it down the road for next year and five and 10 and 15 years from now. Because we'll, we'll come and go, but there'll be a Dixon County long after we're all gone. And we need to make sure, one, we find it, leave it in better condition, we find it. And at least as Dr. Weeks is doing, even with him leaving us, there is a roadmap. Now you can change it, any, it could be changed anytime, but you know, we, we like to show a roadmap that this is the direction we're trying to go. And it's been fiscal responsibility while providing top-notch service to the service, to the people of Dixon County. Everything from public safety down to things that aren't necessary day to day. And I'm proud of what we've done. I'm proud of what y'all done. I'm proud of the commission before you. It's a big deal and I, I'm really proud of it.
Set aside about an hour every month, have all the department heads in and everybody review what's going on and look at the finance and look what's, what, what kind of fund balance we've got. And that's something that we don't do because we're sitting here most of the time in the blind. We really don't know, you know, how to, to, to grasp it all, you know? And I look at it from a business point. If I owe the half million dollars, I'm going to try fiercely to get that half million dollars paid. If I'm paying the bank down there and I pay their salary for 10 years, see, I'm not really doing good. I'm working for them. So it's to seem like it'd be, it'd be the same way for the county. When we, we've got a profit and everything, we want to put more toward the debt service, get rid of all of it. And then can you imagine the fund balance could, could be in, build a school for pay cash for it instead of having to borrow the money to do it?
I'll be glad to do your presentation at next meeting. We go for it periodically. You receive the quarterly financial statements. But I'm willing to sit down and discuss it with y'all at any time. Before we did the budget last time, I reached out to all the commissioners, especially our four new ones. Let's sit down and go over it line by line. You have ultimate responsibility to approve a budget, what we do financially. I stand up here every year for 13 years now, and I'll point out to you, this is the mayor's budget. You may recall a previous mayor, my predecessor would have a budget committee meeting, take budget requests from all of the department heads and elected officials and hand it to the budget committee. I know from my time of the seven years I spent on the Dixon City Council, I didn't have time to put a budget together. What Mayor Wash and Mr. Wacoff did during those times, we put numbers together. And for me to review it, as I end every meeting with y'all, I point out, this is the mayor's budget. You can approve it, you can deny it, or you can create your own. So again, I'm glad to sit here and I've, I'll, I'll stay as late as you want to any night or anytime during the day, but I don't know your questions if you don't ask them.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying that as a group, we've got sunshine law. We can't talk outside the, the, the premises here. So we, I mean, you know, and department heads and we all sit down and hash things out and talk about this and that. Be good ideas, maybe once a month, you know?
Okay. Well, I, I understand. The department has worked for me. I don't mind bringing them if you have specific questions, but again, y'all set policy, approve budgets. I manage the county. But I'm more than glad to bring anyone individually and specific questions on what we're doing. But we can go through the whole budget and I can read through the whole budget. I know there are a few of you that may have some concerns. I went over it too fast. Well, my goal has always been to give you a budget, send you home for two weeks and ask me any questions you have. As Commissioner Gray came and sat down with me, we go over it. Now I can go over it line by line, but whenever I ran for office back in 2010, a lot of complaints were, you weren't getting leadership out of this chair. So I put you a budget together, but again, I don't have an ego in it. I'm at, y'all were asking me and I think the public, I know has asked me to put together physically. So I put you a budget together. But again, I don't have an ego in it. I'm at, y'all were asking me, and I think the public, I know has asked me to put together a physically conservative budget. If you want to sit and break it down, I have no problem. We go over line by line. But I've sat in that back corner one night and, uh, heard, and I'll leave their names. They're not here with some commission longer, going through, talking about coffee prices. Well, that's nice, but you just saved a hundred dollars, but you've got a two million dollar problem. So I hit you with the big problems, what we have to do, what we have to, have to do to get the finances in line. You know, I'm as transparent as you want me to be. I'll take as much time as you do, but my first two years, I did pre- PowerPoint presentations and what I heard from y'all, and I've been facetious about it. Are we raising taxes or are employees getting a pay raise? After that, there weren't a lot of questions. So I don't mean that in a disrespectful motion. I send y'all home with numbers and I'll answer any question. If I don't know them, I'll have Don Hall here to answer them. Uh, a lot of times, several of you asked me questions, but I would rather y'all not only ask me questions and put me and my staff in the situation where I can bring you the answers. I'm okay with you asking those questions out loud because these folks right here may wanna know. Those folks up in that little camera wanna know. So I'm not trying to cut off your debate. But if you ask me right now how much I'm, we're spending in the county clerk's office, I have no idea.
Yeah.
We've got spreadsheets and a computer.
Well, I ain't saying it all if you're doing a bad job. I'm just saying part of that's my fault. Cause seeing, I'm not really smart enough to figure the budget out. I mean, you know, you handed down, there's so many numbers, they're really taking an attorney to, to decipher all of it. I'm talking about just talking about it in general. See, and, and because when you have a board meeting at a bank, you, you got more than one person. You know, most of the time, and, uh, that's, that's all I'm, I'm.
So no, and again.
You come into the job with the experience. You had the experience from the background where you come from. See, and, and, and I'm a, I'm a sawmillor. I ain't no bookkeeper or whatever.
Well, no, but, but, but ask me any question about any number. And again, you know, you and I've been through it here where Mr. Hall's not available.
Yeah.
I don't know. Uh, uh, it's hard for me to tell you every dollar and penny where it goes, but I can find it. So again, I invite all of you, I invite all of you, I invite all these folks at home, please come and sit down. We'll go over it. And, and, and again, some of it's boring. Commissioner Gray was the last one we talked to on that. And I think that day, your bigger focus was on school budget. I don't mean to air, I'm not trying to air you out. But it was, we explained what we could and then we suggested contacting Ms. Frazier or Dr. Weeks to answer rest. Don and I know the general high level stuff, but I can't explain federal programs line three eighty-six and you're very receptive of that. So, uh, again, uh, I, I know we're kind of beating a dead horse here. A completely open book. And, and you may not like what I tell you, but I wanna tell you the truth and I wanna tell you my opinion. So anytime you want to meet with me or any presentation you'd like to be here, I, I will be more than happy to do it. I also hold a class. The next one will be on Thursday, October twelfth at six P M. At the county government building in Dixon from six to nine P M. Several of y'all are graduates of that class. There are some nuts and bolts that we do that frankly, I didn't understand until I started doing the class. We compare and contrast it against local government, what city of Dixon, what, what Burns, Charlotte, Slaton and Danley are do. So there's a lot of those nuances. You're all welcome to participate in that. Uh, there's a lot of information out there and I'll give you as much as you want or as little as you want, but I appreciate what you do. Cause I know it's a thankless job. You get phone calls. Y'all get called out drinking coffee and may not get, have all the information. But in, but if you'd like to invite me, I love, love coffee and I love hanging out people's houses. If they have a projector, we can do it. Or we'll bring them right in here and, uh, still let them provide the food. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Hey Mayor, I, I got my, I, I done my thing like Cindy did and you come later and you ain't done it for me.
What's that?
My little new commissioner certificate. I got all of that done and you, why didn't you do that for me?
Well, I'm sorry it didn't work out for you, but the, uh, I think that's.
She's special here. I don't think, I think she's something going on here.
Is that the county technical assistance service, uh, one that you're? Is that what he's referring to, Ms. Gray? I will call seat ass tomorrow and we'll have that done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like yours framed or unframed?
Framed, if you don't mind.
Taken care of. Matting is extra. Thank you. Any other other business? Madam Clerk, approval of notaries. Thank you, Dr. Weeks. Forgot you were there.
Rebecca, Rebecca Bianchi, Daryl Buttry, Benetta Carlu, David England, Andrea Johnson, David M. Legg Jr., Lynn Lewis, Samantha Lowry, Sydney Newsome, Julie Palm, Wayne Rainey, Kristen Reed, Paula Roberts, Anna Sadler, Deborah Street, Katie Thomas, Roger Waynick, Kern Jaeger.
Open floor for motion, but motion by Simpson, second by Grove. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed, thank you. Under announcements, if you didn't know, Governor Bill Lee visited the Dixon County Cone coming Friday night and that was seen to be quite popular. He, they called kind of last minute. I was out of town. Sorry, couldn't be a part of it, but they wanted to come and watch a football game because he was coming through town. So I appreciate, uh, our friends, our Dixon County Cougar friends and homecoming folks being so nice. Especially you, Dr. Weeks, uh, uh, Joey Holly, the principal, and the man on the ground, OJ Palace, for doing all the work they did on that. So, and I've had several of y'all in this room that helped and showed up and I appreciate that. Uh, we don't have a birthday until December now for Commissioner Dawson. Any other announcements? Anybody, nothing going on this coming weekend? You know, that's sad. Not, I'll let them know. No, and I, and I usually, I usually announce, but there, it's eighth grade night at Charlotte Middle School and he's participating with his family tonight. Um.
Uh, we have eighth grade night against Charlotte Thursday at Burn, so you come over and watch it.
You're welcome to miss the commission that night. Oh, you don't have commission that night, so you're okay.
Yeah, it's this Thursday. That's what I was like, right, him about.
Oh. Any other announcements? There's no objectionable adjourn. Thank you.